For any other entity that has ticket sales in the city of Williamstown.
It's quarterly.
It's quarterly.
Okay.
What was the only question I had?
Any additional questions? Right. Moving forward. Audit update. So on Friday, March 21st, I called the Kentucky State Auditor's Office and discussed with them the need for them to perform an audit. After speaking with the State Auditor's Office, I submitted a letter of request seeking their assistance with providing an audit. On Friday, March 28th, I sent a letter to Governor Beshear explaining the matter and requested his assistance in petitioning and reaching out to the State Auditor's Office on behalf of City of Williamstown to hopefully speed that process up and lend credibility and merit to the need for the audit to be performed. On Wednesday, April 2nd, I was informed by the Auditor's Office that they are reviewing its big case and determining on how they want to proceed. They're fully aware of what's going on. It's just a matter of how they want to handle this. On April 4th, I received an email from a member of Governor Beshear's staff informing me that they have received my letter and they would like to help by recommending me somebody to talk to, and they did. And I reached out to them, but as of today, I have not heard back from that person yet. Hopefully, we can hear back from them by tomorrow. I don't know. But the state needs to perform the audit, and here's why. While an audit can be performed by a professional CPA, they typically only look at numbers, whereas the state will use Kentucky State statutes, ordinances, rules, and regulations to make sure that we are following the law. Given the above mention, a professional CPA will not cross-reference the rules and regulations. They may also inadvertently overlook things that the state's auditors will intentionally look for, such as potential crime activity. This is the most important thing to us if the city wishes to recoup any of its money that was lost or stolen. The Kentucky Attorney General's Office and the Kentucky State Police have both informed me that in order for either party to step in, they would need an audit to be completed. But the audit must include several things and the state evidence that there could be potential crime activity. If it is not on there, then we'll have to jump through a bunch of other legal hoops that the state will have to go through with us in order to get them to get on board. It would be far simpler if the state just came in and did the audit to begin with. Because if the state finds things in the audit, they will immediately send that information over to the Kentucky Attorney General's Office, and we will not have to really work at getting all that done. Hiring a CPA to perform the audit will cost money, whereas the state will likely not charge anything to perform this audit. I say likely because that is not technically in writing yet, but that is what I've been told, that it would be far cheaper to go with the state because they will come in and do it. It seems to me that while I continue to go above and beyond to ensure the citizens and our community are well taken care of and everything is handled professionally and correctly in this unsettling time, I have done nothing but remain open and honest and transparent with the people and the state. However, it seems like council doesn't want the state to perform this audit, and I'm not sure why.
Is this where we can say something?
Yeah.
Can we speak now? So I don't have any problem at all with the state coming in. I mean, I welcome them. I'm just afraid it's going to take too long. And several council meetings ago, when you said that you called the KSP, they said you need to have an independent audit performed weeks ago.
We actually, on March 3rd, the council gave you direction to go out and hire a forensic Mr. Henson here gave you a contact all the way back on March 3rd to try to get this audit going.
So...
And so the council has been in favor of an audit for a long time. I mean, state, private, whatever, we just want the books to be looked at, and we want things to... We want to know where we're at with the city.
Yeah, I think...
For budgets.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I...
Sorry, I'm sorry to do that.
I think that, like I said, we've been asking for weeks now, and it's in previous council meetings, it's on the record, it's been on video, that we've asked for this independent audit, and I understand it's going to cost money, but I don't know why we keep waiting, and I appreciate that the state would come and do it for free maybe, but I just don't understand why we couldn't go ahead and had the audit started weeks ago. Mr. Henson spoke to an accounting firm.
Yeah.
Gave us a price, what it would be, and that they could start pretty much right away, but here we are.
Yeah. And I would like to read an email, Mayor, that I sent you. I sent you, and this is on March 24th, and because there's a lot of talk out there about council not wanting an audit, which is the furthest from what you're...
Exactly.
I wrote to you, "I appreciate your update below regarding your course of action pertaining to the city clerk's office and possible financial discrepancies that may or may not exist. I also want to be fully transparent with all involved, including the state." So I have no problem with a state audit. In that being said, I would like to remind you of our council meeting on the 10th of March, where we, the council and you, decided we would contact ETA Investments and ask them to do a complete audit of the clerk's office, as well as the rehiring of two former employees to assist in training the team there and assist in catching up on the daily tasks that have fallen behind considerably. In addition, we also spoke to Paul Maddox, our city auditor, and asking him to go through the books and giving us a report out to see how bad the situation really is. Would we not be better off to do our own audit with a company we hired, and if we find it, we can then present to the state, as of March 21st, and two former city employees have been cleared to stop having contacted them? Has our attorney, Frank Whitman, been informed of your actions of contacting the state attorney and state auditor if so, like in those opinions? I am also concerned the morale of the city clerk's office at this time and what the impact would be if all of a sudden they were not allowed to do their job because they have limitations put on them by a state agency. I'm not sure the consequences of calling for state auditors, but my guess is it will take a considerable amount of time and possibly prevent the current staff from doing their jobs, including putting together the '25, '26 budget, which should be already started. My recommendation is that you rethink your current course of action and implement the policy sequence that the council unanimously discussed with you and that you agreed to on the 10th. So I want to go on record to this, you know, we want an audit. We want an independent forensic audit. I have no problem with a state auditor coming in and doing it, but to Jenna's point, how long is that going to take? It sounds like it's just mumble jumble right now, and they're talking about it. So that's all I got to say. I think we should just hire an independent audit, and then if the state wants to come in and do it, fine, let it be.
One last thing to say. I take offense and do not appreciate being misled to the public that we, as council, do not want an audit, whether it be state, independent. I don't think that's right for you to say that and to mislead the public, that the council, for some reason, doesn't want a state audit. They can come, like the state, national, independent, whoever, all of them. And it should have already been done, and it should have already been started weeks ago, like we have requested.
Yeah, because we have a budget coming up, and how can we budget anything when we don't even know where we're starting from? That's my biggest concern right now.
Yeah, I'm with you. I also feel like the state is very aware of what's going on, and as I said before, there are limitations to what a professional CPA can do, whereas having a state do it would be to our favor.
That's fine, but isn't something better than nothing? Isn't starting now better than waiting, waiting, waiting? I mean, take all the information the state brings, let them look at everything they need to look at, take the independent, put it together, look at it. I don't understand why we're just so hunged in on just the state coming. I mean, I don't understand that, but maybe I'm misunderstanding. Get all of it here.
First, you contact, you have ETA.
Well, keep in mind, too, as Mr. Henson pointed out on March 10th, that we all agreed to have Crystal and Vivian to come back in and start working on that. We all agreed on that. They have made progress on that. And we got an email Friday of their progress, and it's very alarming what has been found thus far. Now, will you let them do their jobs? And if they coincide with whatever auditor comes here, whether it's state, independent, but they have done a tremendous amount of work in what little time they've put into this. Did you get this email as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And what it says here, how they've been working on the budget reports and all the expenses, they've worked on nine months of calculations here, just on payroll that they've had to do, which is a small piece of what has to be done. And the amount of overtime that the clerk's office and the fire department were very alarming. They've made mention of that. And they're giving recommendations on what you can do to not have as much overtime. You know, submit a monthly report. They're starting to review the budget tracking reports and compare them to the latest budget ordinances. And from what their calculations, there's a lot of mistakes in that. They found a lot here, that revenue and expense items are not currently listed according to the budget ordinance. They're working on that as well as they have the time to do that, and they're limited on time. Revenue expense items, various festival line items that were approved per the ordinance, as well as additional expense for the additional new employee, street department, not reflected in your budget tracking reports. That's just a few things they've named. They will continue to give us an update as they work. So there has been progress made, and it's going to take time to do this. So yes, let these folks do their job, and I agree with what the other council members said. We've all agreed for the audit, without question.
For weeks.
I'd like to make that a motion, that we officially contact ETA Investments for a forensic audit in the city of Williamstown.
Motion made on table by Councilor Henson to contact ETA Investments to do an audit, which is seconded by Councilor Payne. Now would be the time for question and discussion. My question for you in this discussion would be, yes, I don't disagree, but there's been money allocated for Mr. Paul Maddox and his normal audit. There's, I think, what, $5,000 left in the audit line? So...
I thought we, at the last, at that meeting, we talked about in the payroll area where I know we've got Vivian and Crystal back part-time, but there's still money left over from Laura Clamiehan, and I'm sure there's money available there. So even if we have to do a budget amendment...
So you have to do a budget amendment, that's why I...
Then we'll do it. At this point, we'll do it. We'll transfer funds over. I mean, that's my opinion, Councilor Henson.
Councilor Smith?
Well, I was just going to say, and still move forward with the state.
Yeah.
Keep in contact, have them come. But I would just, I mean, the state doesn't move very fast, so I'm kind of wondering when they're going to get here. Like, maybe November, if we're lucky. So I think that we need to know what's happened in that office. Like, we've asked for weeks, and we still don't know.
Am I being easier for the state, if we do get an audit, easier for them to come in and look at it?
Yeah.
I mean, we've got to have an audit. We talked about this, and yeah.
Yeah.
We've got to have, see where we're at. Like Dave said, the budget and stuff, we just, you know, we can't do nothing until we get an audit, see what we're, everything's, yeah.
Motion is set.
Yes, roll call, please.
Ken Prepper?
Yes.
David Henson?
Yes.
Ronnie Mains?
Yes.
Jason Payne?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, moving forward, discussion of city long-term obligation debt for Councilor Smith. Councilor Smith, you have a floor.
So I was just, had asked this to be put on the agenda, because when you made your speech a few weeks ago, you talked about obviously he was in debt, about $15 million, and that's definitely true, but I just didn't know if you had any, could explain that to the general public, because I know they feel like it's just like overnight, we're just in debt, and nobody knew it, and what's going on up there, so was just curious what your thoughts were on where the debt has come from, because I know you did mention that you had inherited some of the debt, but there was no mention of what it had, where it had come from and what it was.
Yes, so I had this Lisa assist me with that, and I have a list of 11 debt items and what they are, and when they had started. Would you like me to read them?
Yes, that would be great. I would appreciate that.
So Fury's 2015, there's a, it says, "Patent all property development." The balance as of June 31st, 2023, is $613,333... Sorry, $613,333.
What's the balance of '24, June 30th?
It is $573,333.
Have you collected funds since then, from June 30th, of '24 to now, from the patent outs?
Some, yes, not all.
I'd not expect all. What would be your amount that you've collected thus far, from June 30th to '24?
I would say $115,000 off the top of my head.
$115,000? Does that include the recent one?
How recent are you thinking?
Within the last month?
No.
Okay. That may be early for you yet, so that's fine. You might want to check the $115,000, just to make sure we can bring that back at our next meeting, make it accurate.
I think some in the public have some questions about what property that is...
And what is patent out?
So it is property on Noah's Way, where the dollar store is there. The people that owned that land were the patent outs, so what it says here is patent out property development. This happened in 2015, so I'm not 100% sure what all is involved. Prepper?
Yes.
Do you know?
Pretty much so. What that was there was the patent outs came to the city, wanting it to be bonded for their underground utilities and street improvements. The agreement was that they would be paying that back as they sold lots up there, and currently, that's what they have been doing. Their lots obviously didn't sell as quick as they anticipated. Currently, I think they've got three already sold and two that are pending. I can't remember if it totaled up...
$600,000 debt, that's over $600,000 debt. That's for you guys to run all the utilities and stuff out there?
They bonded $613,000, is what they did, to help fund for them to pay for their onsite underground utilities, street curbing, that is what that was.
So was this a bond that was issued for them, the city?
It's actually a TIF bond, Brian.
Okay.
Tax increment financing.
So money that actually come out of the city coffers?
No, no, it was bonded. They sold the bonds. It did not come out of the general fund. And the city currently is the fourth one in line in terms of if you get your money back, the banks are three in line, city's number four, if you want to be on the title of it, if you will.
Well, we don't have any money, we don't, we have a skin to game other than the car and the bond.
Well, when they pay off the lot, then they pay down. They're for quite some time, they paid monthly, and the patent outs paid monthly, and then monthly came to bi-monthly every six months, and now it's to the point that when they sell a lot...
Has the city had to make any payments on the bond?
Yes, sir.
Yes, they have.
We know how much.
Do we have a lien on their property then?
Yes, yes, we do. We're forth on the line there. We were supposed to be first, but conveniently, the banks know how to twist that wording around.
So $600,000, is that the number that the city's had to put out, or is it substantially less number after they made some bond amendments?
Considerably less than that. They financed $613,000, as Mark read. June 30th, '24, they were down to $573,000. Hopefully, what he said is $115,000 has been paid since then. That would be good.
Since 2015?
No, 2024.
Okay.
It started in 2015.
20, it started in 15.
So we know how much money the city actually has out that they had to cover in the bond amendments?
I don't have that number on me, but I've had it before, I've seen it before. I don't have that number on me, but that was something that Vivian and I looked at towards the end of 2023.
The city would...
All I'm trying to look at is if we're talking, we have $15 million in debt, is this one, is the full $600,000 being counted off against, or just what we actually put into the, what amount is actually going against that?
That's a standalone project there, so in other words, when they sell all their lands off, including their past dues, the city will be back to zero on that. So it's just taking them a lot more time. That's what it's done. So if they've had any past dues, and I've sat in with a meeting with Mark, and he has clearly told them, "You are past due on paying." Correct, Mark?
Yes, sir.
I did hear him say that. He said, "You will pay the past dues and the interest and pay the debt." So they agreed to do that.
And that's pretty much, that pretty much happens with all bonds that are guaranteed by municipal entity. If the person that the bond is guaranteed for does not make that payment, the municipal government who's sponsored it's going to have to.
That depends on the bond. Not all of them are written that way. Is that correct, Mr. Whitman?
Yes, sir.
Would you care to state your name for the record?
Brian Miles. Resident of the city of Williamstown.
Okay, the second one is the KIA A0809 sewer plant, and that was started in 2012, and as of June 30th, 2024, $7,223,41 remains. And as for the...
Do we, city mayor, do we know how much the sewer plant, I mean, we talked about the sewer plant, yeah?
Yes.
How much that cost to build back in 2012 and 2013, what that original debt started at?
I was going to ask if Mr. Prepper knew that answer to the other... Councilor Prepper?
Sewer plant was right at $16 million. Keep in mind, too, when we're talking about the water plant, sewer plant, when the ARC came to Williamstown and announced that they wanted to build an ARC here, we immediately got started on that. That was in the last term of Mr. Glenn Colwell and the beginning term of Rick Skinner. So with that said, we knew exactly how much money we was going to have to finance with that. Also, keep in mind, too, that when we put together the finance package for the water plant and the sewer plant, the city of Dry Ridge is equally, works with us on that project. So they helped with their rates pay down some of this debt. Also, too, with the ARC, because that circled around a lot of that, because our water plant was, number one, was not going to be large enough to supply the water. Also, the regulations that our old water plant were working under, with new regulations and standards coming in for quality of water, we couldn't make it work. We had to do that. Also, too, with the ARC, they paid water and sewer impact fees to help fund and finance some of these projects here, too. So that's very important that you know that. So anytime there's a project now, from that point on, whether it's a subdivision or any other, a motel, for example, that was built, they pay water and sewer impact fees to help retire some of these debts. So please always remember to understand that. I just want to make clarification for that, when we're talking about the importance of what financing has been done, as well as what debt is still here.
I think, Mayor, was there grant money for the sewer plant?
I have no idea. This is in 2012. Councilor Prepper would know.
There was one grant for the sewer plant of $1 million.
So it involved Davis' pool water and sewer impact fees for his new project out there?
He did.
And the amount of how much?
I don't know that number.
It's calculated on the equivalent unit rate. There's a calculation that has to be done to determine each one, so you could build a house in Williamstown, and that would be different than Councilor Prepper building a new church. It all depends on what that calculation rate is.
Now, Mr. Davis, you brought, that's a good point. Now, he had his, part of his subdivision, that's a private subdivision, so he funded that all on his own there.
He did. He funded inside his subdivision.
That's correct.
But the city still paid for that road, for the water, sewer, electric, which seems a little bit much for the city, for the private citizens of Williamstown to be paying for one man's house out there so far.
Oh, I agree with you. City of Williamstown was very generous to him.
Very generous.
I agree. Some of that was through KIA funds, and some of that was through...
And that could be any...
American Rescue, the American Water Rescue Plan.
Right.
That's what part of that was done with that.
So those entities pay a higher impact fee than the normal residents do, the high-volume users?
If he ever has any high volume, but yes, to answer that, you take the ARC, they're a high-volume user, yes, they pay an impact fee there.
But what I'm saying is that when you do the equation, you know, if you take, if you take 100 gallons of water and the impact fee is 25 bucks, and a high-volume user uses 2 million gallons, are they still paying the same proportionate amount of an impact fee, or is it a higher multiplier that they use?
If it's a commercial rate, it's higher than a residential rate.
Okay, so the commercial residential is the break there?
Yes.
Okay, loan number three, Fork Bank Sewer Truck. That was in 2022, and to date, as of June 30th, 2024, we owe $90,172. And loan number four, which is Series 2012, that has been paid off, so we owe nothing on that.
Mark, can I say something before you move forward?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
I want to steer back to your sewer plant there, so that the folks would know the retirement date on that. Sewer plant retires date on that KIA loan is 2032.
See, that was something that I haven't figured out yet, was when the retirement dates were on all those. So that's why I haven't provided that information, because I don't have that.
It would be in your spreadsheet on your budget tracking. That's where I got my information.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I'm sorry I interrupted you. While we was on sewer, I just wanted to keep things clear.
Loan number five, KIA F11... Loan number five, KIA F11-02, number for water lines. This was created in 2013 and that is, let me see, 893,703 dollars.
Do we know, I mean, where were the water lines?
I was, can you re-ask Mr. Crupper?
Sorry.
And here to go on.
Feel like a relic here.
Sorry.
You've been here a while.
Almost. That line there was from, right here in front, aside, actually started in front of the funeral home. It went north and replaced all that line. Some of it went down Humes Ridge and some of it went down Waterworks Road. That's what, that's what that project was there. That line retires in 2033.
What'd you say the other one retired on?
2032.
The F11-02 water line replacement, that one retires in 2033. That's a KIA loan.
Okay, next we have the KIA loan, F13-013 for the water plant. So I'm assuming, Mr. Crupper, so that was out of 2018? Is that for the new water plant?
Yes, sir.
Currently, we set at $4,303,029 as of June 30th, 2024.
And do we know how much the water plant cost to begin with?
Almost 19 million. With that, with the purchase of the land and the plant.
Do we know when that retires?
Yes, 2038.
All right, number seven, KLC meters.
You mean water line replacement?
It just says.
Meters?
Yes.
Okay.
On, on my notes here, it says meters.
That is correct. You're right.
So that's what I'm assuming it's for. We owe 22,490 dollars. That was done in 2010. Councilor Crupper, would you care to fill all of us in?
On that one? That's pretty simple. That one is, that was the replacement, when they went to the water meters, that could be read by computer. That bill, that loan will be paid off effective this year, June 30th of 2025. 22,490 dollars will pay that off.
Do we know how much the loan was for?
I'm not sure.
Loan number eight, First Security Bank, that has been paid off. And there's a loan from Fork Bank, that's number nine, that has been paid off as well. Do you, Councilor Crupper, know what those were for? On my notes here, it just says First Security and Fork Bank.
First Security was probably retired the debt on some police vehicles that were leased. And the other Fork Bank would probably be for a vehicle. It's easier to, we, when the city gets vehicles that they want to purchase, they go locally with local financing for that.
Okay, moving on to number 10. Number 10 is with Trust Bank, Truist Bank, sorry. That's MGP loan. And the balance as of January 30th, 2024 is 58,990 dollars. And that was done in 2022. Councilor Crupper, would you care to explain? Care to silence off cell phones, please?
That, the MB, the, the Truist Bank loan for MGPI was the water line extension from Arnie Rising out Baton Rouge Road for their water suppression system. It was a three-year loan. It will retire June 30th of '25. It has an annual payment of 58,990 dollars. So it, it had a four-year loan.
Okay. Do we know how much it was at the start?
City was right at about 300 and, between 325 and 350,000 for that line.
That's where we went and made the road, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
That was, it was 300 some thousand.
Yeah, Ronnie was on the council then.
Yeah, I was on the council then, yeah.
Did you get reimbursement for any of that cost?
You would get that through barrel tax.
I'm sorry?
You'll be getting that through barrel tax.
And lastly, Rural Development Water Treatment Plant loan was done in 2019 and currently there's still $4,462,500 on this loan. Councilor Crupper, you have the floor?
Yes, that was an additional rural development loan for the water plant to help finance it. It has an annual payment of 81,500 dollars a year and it retires in 2056. It was a 40-year loan.
Do we know what that cost was in the beginning?
You mean on the, the water plant itself?
Well, the loan that we took out here for rural development.
Um, I'm not sure. If you calculate it all up, then you would be able to come up with that.
Yeah. Seventy, 81,500 dollars times 40 years, basically, right?
Correct.
Plus maybe some interest. 81,500 dollars times 40 years is $3,260,000. $3,260,000.
That don't sound right. That's not right. Now, if you got to pass, you got to balance a 4 million, that, that doesn't work.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I just times that number by 40.
The rural development also had a grant with it, so it had some debt forgiveness on it too.
So that is.
Some of these are debt forgiveness loans, where when city got financing with, with the help of Dry Ridge, the way some of those are calculated, they take the population of both cities and they factor in cost of living, as well as the average income of families in both cities, and they determine that on loan forgiveness.
So if there's loan forgiveness, then why are we paying off the loan?
It's not all forgiven. It's partial.
Partial, okay. Question about the two, I think there's two loans that are on here that are not accounted for when we received this. The water line for Castle Knoll came out of a KIA fund, correct?
That was my understanding, it was a KIA fund. No, it was not. It was part of the American Rescue Plan fund.
Okay. Why? Which is none of these, correct?
No.
Okay. So this isn't even all the debt we have? Is that what you're saying?
No, I think you're pretty close. The only one you missed on there, and it's already paid off, is when the, when the city financed fiber optic in 2012 for the cable department, that bill has been paid off. So you missed that one a while ago, but that's okay.
Which one?
Series 2012 bonds, that was cable.
No, I said there were four. I said, yeah, I said it was been paid off.
Yeah, I know. But I just want to emphasize it was for the cable department.
Got you. Thank you. I didn't ask you. That's, that's.
That's okay.
Good question. So the majority of the debt seems to be circling around the water plant and sewage?
Please state your name for the record, if that's okay?
Did I include?
Please state your name for the record.
Matt?
Yes, so when the ARC, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Crupper, but when the ARC came in, the infrastructure that the city of Williamstown had for water and sewer was not strong enough to support that. So we had to make some upgrades. Is that correct, Councilor Crupper?
Yes.
And that was in?
Mostly 2012 and 13.
Was it a just, or you said an extension or something like that at the end, the 4 million or whatever? For something about the last water thing that you had mentioned? What was that again? On your list?
It says Rural Development Water Treatment Plant.
Right.
And I assume you explained it.
I was saying, I'm just trying to recap. What, what did you say that was again? The last, the water treatment plant at the end?
The rural development?
Yeah.
That's for the water treatment plant.
Right. That's what I'm saying. But that was, we already had one or we had to create a new one?
We had an older plant, yes. Yeah. And the correction too, on some of these grant money and, and rural development, we also, it was not a million. It was 2.4 million is what we got in, in forgiving on grant, is what it was. So it's hard for me to keep up with all the numbers. Okay?
Well, and plus the plant was 18 million dollars.
That's correct.
For the water plant. And the sewer plant was 16 million. Well, the water plant was almost 19 million. So that's a lot of money. And I think it's good for this to be presented to me. These are, we have to have a water plant, we have to have a sewer plant to, to run the city. So you can't pay off 18 million and 16 million in just a few years.
Also, the interest rates are extremely low, I think. Correct?
Yeah.
Yes, that is correct.
Like around 1%?
Yeah.
There's a lot of 1%ers here.
1% for the interest.
But help you answer your question on understanding, our old water plant, if you went on down the end of Waterworks Road, drop over the hill, you'll find what little of it's left, if you're familiar with that?
In England.
Okay, that's where it was at. It was decided then to bring it up on top of the plant, or up on top of the ridge, because down on that hillside was very expensive and been really, really hard to put a plant of that size down there on that hill.
I was just curious.
Sure, you can ask anything.
Water plant multiple times? I'm just trying to wrap my head around, do we have multiple water plants or is it just one or renovating or extending or what have you?
Councilor Crupper, I do have a question. So we have item number six, which is KIA loans for the water plant. It's almost 19 million. But then we have the water treatment plant. What, what was the difference? Item, between item 11 and item six?
I'm not sure. I know where your numbers are at on items here. We don't have numbers on our paper.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, I continue now. KIA loan, F13-13.
Okay, that's on the water treatment plant.
Yes, sir. It's in. And then the last one, which was rural development.
That's correct. That's on your water treatment plant.
What was, what was the need for that that was different than the number six or?
You had several different loans from different entities.
Okay.
That's how that, that is. Rural Development is completely different from the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority. Probably the rural development, probably under USDA.
And then how much?
That also too, we've got to keep in mind on rural development there, that 4 million, that's probably the water line that went in and around from Summer Drive and come up from the pump station. It went up and come across Fairview Road and come back across to the water plant.
Question, Mr. Crupper, how much do you think the KIA loans are for? Or they, not KIA, what was it? The American Rescue Plan for the Castle Knoll water line extension?
What's, what's, what's your question?
How much was that for?
I don't remember that.
That was in 2022, before I took office, I believe.
Yeah, I, there's a list of those, probably somewhere in the clerk's office has all those. I don't have that with me tonight.
I will try and find it. Any additional questions? Something I would like to do is get us out of debt. I know it's not going to be easy. It's going to come overnight. But I think part of the financial plan that I've been working on focuses on certain debts that we can try and, I mean, none of these are going to be quick to come out of, but try and get ahead of game a little bit. Because ultimately, things are going to break down and we're going to need to fix stuff. So I don't want to keep going in debt.
Well, late, late last year, it was requested that you get with your department superintendent to figure out your operation and maintenance plan for the water plant, sewer plant, cable. So when budget season comes here next month, or whenever, you know exactly what it costs every day to make a gallon of water and process a gallon of sewer. So, you know, operations and maintenance, yes, that all needs to be on the schedule, but it's one of those things that kind of creeps up on you. And the next thing you know, you're spending more money in operation and maintenance than you're really generating. So it's an important factor. You have to do that on an annual basis, because sometimes, well, when we first financed both those projects, for the folks who lived here a long time, especially the sewer department, we had to prove to KIA, USDA and others that we could pay that loan off. And that was not easy. And, and every meeting we had, the mayor of Dry Ridge was always at those meetings because, you know, they were instrumental in helping get the funding for both water and sewer. But back when we had to do the sewer plant, we had to raise our sewer rates 105% to guarantee that rate. It wasn't easy, but we calculated together with, with cooperation of Dry Ridge, three years in a row, we raised it 33% each and every year, so we could get the funding in place. So when the project started, we had enough funds for 12 months to keep the system working and keep the construction going. And likewise, we had to do the same thing on our water treatment plant too. So annually, our water services and our sewer, you know, the, the loan is paid twice a year, one in June and one in December for both those. Lisa probably will be writing a check for that pretty soon, at least once, if you haven't done it already. Is that correct, Lisa, for each one?
Yes. Just want to make, oh, sorry, a comment that it's so important to protect our investment, that water plant, with the zebra muscles and all the things that are going on, we really need to echo his, you know, request for an engineer to try to get, get the zebra muscles resolved. We really don't know what they're doing to the inner workings of the, the plant as well. We need to determine what, you know, we need to figure out what's going on with that. Talking about all these big numbers and how that water plant is, is essential for life and business and everything to our community. So we need to really protect what's going on there.
Valuable asset. And also, you know, and the debt that we have, the bond, they're 1% and 2% loans. So I would suggest that we could invest in other things, other than rushing to pay off a 1% loan. So I wouldn't get too whacked out about that.
Yeah, I just, as I stated before, Paul Maddox said it's not a terrible amount of debt, but also be careful to not keep adding on, because then you get to a point where you can't pay off your debt. Councilor Chris?
Well, and Christie's here from the bank. I don't know what the CD rates are at Heritage, but I know, I think we talked about Fork Bank CD rates for a five-month CD, what was it, Ford Point something? And how we had talked about and asked you to go and take some money to put in CDs to make some money. And I believe it was, I believe it was about $1,000. They were asked to put in a CD for that five-month period to make the Ford Point whatever percentage. And that was several months ago, probably six months ago for the holidays. And the CD's never been done, right?
Correct. But as you recall, I stated that way before anybody brought this to council's attention, this is a conversation that Paul Maddox and I had. And he said, this is a great idea. Let's get through the budget and then you and I can sit down and start working on this, because I want to do it across the board with every department. And I've sat with every department, explained my idea to do it. And every superintendent has been on board from the beginning, but that was not to be done until towards the end of this fiscal year.
I don't remember that. I thought, I don't remember saying that. But maybe didn't.
Anything else? Counselor Henson?
Yes.
I'm not trying to pick on you, I just can't remember. Were you the one that requested this to be on the agenda?
I did not, but I'm not the one on the agenda, but I'll be glad to read it.
What question drives it on the agenda?
Because we want to, we want to, Ken, you want to talk to this, you want me to? Because we want to, we want to read the resolution.
Resolution needed to be, this resolution needed to be read in our open council meeting because at our last council meeting, it was not read properly because it was not on that particular agenda that night. So it is now being presented to be put on tonight's agenda.
So, okay, so what had happened, I guess, Tuesday? Shouldn't go on the record, is that correct?
Mr. Breitman?
The meeting was never even adjourned properly. You marked your main plate and said meeting adjourned and we never even adjourned it properly. There was no first or second or local.
Well, there's several ways to adjourn a meeting. I just exercised one of the four ways you can.
Well, regardless, we want to make sure it's read and on the record officially. So if there was any ambiguity in our last meeting, and apparently there was, we want to read, read it and state it and hold on. Now, I did, I called Frank on last Wednesday or so, day after, and told him we would be resubmitting it and he said, great idea.
Have a couple of questions. Kind of violated the rules a little bit, I guess?
That was your interpretation.
It was yours.
Because you adjourned the meeting, you said you can't do this, a meeting adjourned, meeting adjourned. That's what you said.
Yes.
So we're redoing it. Now, if you're saying that you accept last Tuesday's resolution and you agree with it, are you agreeing on it?
Oh, I don't, I really don't agree with it.
Well, I don't need to agree with the resolution, but the presentation of it.
Yeah, I, I knew what you meant, that's what I was saying. Um, do you care if I confer with my attorney real fast? Let's pause for a 10-minute recess.